All stand for the pledge, please.
All right.
A pledge that leads to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Green, could you give us a prayer, please?
Father God, thank you for this opportunity to come together and handle the affairs of the city. Father, we just ask that your Holy Spirit would guide us, remind us of what's important, not get caught up in individual opinions or thoughts, but Father, really try to stay focused on what's best for the city and our constituents. We thank you again for another day to have life abundantly through Jesus Christ, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Could I get a roll call, please?
Green?
Here.
Patrick?
Here.
Guthrie?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Swisher?
Here.
Brandt?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
Could I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda?
So move, Your Honor.
Could I have a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, approve corrected regular session minutes of March 18th, 2025. I need a motion and a second.
I move to approve the regular session minutes of March 18th, 2025.
Second, Green.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Committee reports, we have municipal service and personnel committee, council members Brandt and Green.
Okay, first off, we have the stormwater tip of the month, and it's buy household and garden products that are least toxic to the environment. Remember where storm rains flows, everything goes. Also to report, we had a municipal services meeting on the 25th of March, and a couple of issues that we discussed, one was the street program, and then a little bit of the airport, and I'll let you do the airport. But the street program, if y'all remember, at the last meeting, we had given you a proposal for the cold mill and overlay and the slurry, crack seal and slurry program. And at the time, that was, the totals of those two was 788,000 and around $400. And we felt like we may have to trim that down, but we met, and we felt like we've done a really good job of doing some street programs in the last couple of years, and we wanted to kind of continue that. So we will, it's going to be our proposal to go ahead and do that. That money's going to have to come out of the general fund balance that's there. One important thing, and I know, and I know Drew will touch on it too, we're running out of money in that fund, and we're going to have to come up with some more revenue of some sort. And we talked about this at the last meeting, so I think the public can probably look and see with us come up with a proposal in the near future for some, maybe a sales tax of some sort to get our streets and really keep this program up and keep it going. Like I say, we have over 100 miles of street in this town, and the prices are going up, and we just don't have enough in the general revenue to make it work and get that done. So Drew, you want to touch on that?
Yeah, you want me to go over some numbers, I guess?
Yeah.
Possibly. I've been working with Julie, trying to figure out the sales tax that have been passed in the past. And so, this year's budget, we allocated a half a million dollars for street repair work. Not everyday repairs, is that right, Randy? That was just for the contract to come in, mail overlay, slurry, those kind of things, half a million dollars. Well, because of the increase in costs and things, we only have 168,000 of that left, if my memory serves correct, Randy.
Yeah.
So, we've already spent 332,000 of that. And this is where Dan was getting at, that we're going to be running out of money if we want to fix our streets. And so, that's why Dan was saying, we decided maybe a one-time deal here, since it snuck up on us. We have, the fund he was talking about, the money coming out of was the street fund, and we do have some reserve in there, which we should, because the equipment is very expensive. And so, we wanted to take whatever left from the 168, or whatever it took to do the program that Randy thought needed to be done, because our streets are in bad shape, we all know that. And so, we thought this one time, we would take the funds out of the street fund to finish what they projected with the possibility of really trying to let the citizens know that we need to pass something if we want to keep this up. We threw around some ideas. One of the ideas I had was passing a one cent sales tax, where a million dollars a year goes straight to contract work on our streets. And in five years, that would get us a long way. Now, we'd have to work with MMU, because they're tearing up some streets too, but, and it would sunset, you know? I don't want it just to be an empty pocket tax that goes on forever and ever and ever. But, anyway, we're talking about stuff like that, because at the rate we're going, our street fund, if we keep doing streets, will be bankrupt in three to five years. So, and then we'll have no money for streets. Is that the last tax that we've passed, that you gave me?
The most recent.
In 2015?
Yes.
Okay. So it's been 10 years since we've passed a tax in this town. And we have the reserves, and I'm glad we have them now, but, like I said, three to five years, and we're going to have a hard time maintaining streets at that point, not even just doing them and getting them rebuilt, yes.
One question.
Yeah.
Is that 2015 tax, sunset tax also?
That I'm not sure of, I'll have to go back and look.
Just renew it and continue it on.
Well, the problem is that money we're getting from that still isn't enough, I think would be the answer to that, yeah. I don't think it is. Julie and I were just talking about that, she's going to do some more looking, because we both thought there wasn't tax passed before that, that had a certain amount that went to streets and certain that went to general fund, and that did sunset out for the street work, and then it all kind of could be used for whatever. But she's going to look into that. And then we're down to the sanitation fund, where we feel like we've taken it down low enough, to where we can't take any more money from that. We have 1.5 million, I believe, still in that, and that's going to pay for a street sweeper. I know there's discussion about street sweeper and sanitation, I'm not getting into that, but we're going to need a new street sweeper soon, and it pays for the insurance, for the labor, and everything in that. So, if we go steal money from that, we'll be out of money there. So, I mean, eventually, there's just no way around it. So that's where we are money-wise, and what we'd like to do to get our streets up to snuff. Any questions about the street stuff? Questions about allowing that to? This is kind of a one-time deal, to pay, to get these done, with the notion that we're going to try to put something before the citizens here really quick about voting on a street tax. So, we did look at fuel tax, we've looked at options for the past, I don't know, JD, three, four, five, six months, we've been looking at this for a while, trying to find the best avenue. And the fuel tax was harder to come by, it wasn't a guaranteed amount of money, it would fluctuate, it was harder to pass, it was really restricted by the state, et cetera, I think, if I'm saying that right. Do you remember?
Correct, no, that's correct.
Okay. So we felt this would be better. And then the airport, if we're not talking about streets anymore, we met for agricultural agreement contracts, which I'm reviewing right now to hopefully get those going. We met with the two main ag operators out here and discussed space use out there, and you'll see tonight, we would like to really get a camera system approved out there. With that much activity, you've got, at any time, 10 to 15 airplanes moving, grooving, taking off, landing, refilling, fertilizer, whatever, it's just a lot going on, and we don't, we feel like we have some liability out there. And so, we've got some bids for camera systems to put out the airport, and that way, if there's any discrepancies, it's, we have some hard evidence. It's not he said, she said kind of stuff. And so, we would really like to get that approved and get that up and operational here in the next month, because ag season's getting ready to start. So, you'll see that bid coming up. Other than that, I think everything at the airport's going pretty good, we're starting higher standards out there, and we've been working with the state, MoDOT, and they've been working with the FAA about getting our airport up to standards, and so, it's good. Yes, sir?
Another comment I'd like to make about the streets, just to kind of drive the point home a little bit more. A lot of these plans we've been working on for a couple of years, and at the time we were talking about them and working them in, the cost was a lot lower, and I think it's hard to anticipate, especially how much inflation we've had in cost of materials and things like that in the last year, and even less in some cases. So, if we want to do the plans that we set out to do, which all need to be done, you know, we were kind of taken by surprise by the increase, we figured maybe a few percent, you know, prices may go up, but in some cases, they've just damn near doubled. And that's, that's just kind of hard to plan for. So, you know, this is, this is just one of them things, and now we're stuck having to deal with it.
I don't think we can track, fly it in. And I really want to preface, like, this is citizens' town, I mean, if you guys let us know, if you don't want a whole cent sales tax, then do a half cent, and we get what we get. But, at the end of the day, we hear a lot of complaints about our streets. I was just talking to a citizen this week about our streets, and I'm like, you know, we're trying, but I would like to word it as such that you know that money's going to go fix the streets, and I know you've seen it around town, we're working as fast as we can on them, but if you don't want to have a whole cent, then tell us you want a half cent, and then that's all the money we'll have, and it'll just take longer, you know? But, we want to hear from you on that, so, because we want it to be successful.
Thank you, Councilmen Brandt and Green. Next is Property Finance Budget and Audit Committee, that is council members Thompson and Patrick. I have no report tonight, Mr. Patrick, do you have anything?
I have no report.
Committee Development and Code Committee, Councilman Members Cook and Allen.
I've got something. The code enforcement meeting for April's going to be April 23rd at 8:30, right here, if you're supposed to be at that hearing, then come to that hearing and see what we can work out. Then I've got another thing here, and this is something I'm kind of excited about, because I've seen this work in other communities. And Rebecca Adams has been working on this Main Street USA small town revitalization thing, and she's here to make a presentation for us, unless she's changed her mind. I didn't figure you were.
Thank you, Councilman. My name is Rebecca Adams, I am the president of Marshall Main Street. And first, I would like to start off with asking the city to please consider sponsoring a $2 million project that we're working on. April Fools. Just kidding, guys. Just kidding. Okay, I have four points that I'd like to go over. The first one is just a recap of the town hall meeting that we had. If you guys are familiar, we had it on March 3rd, and we had over 50 people in attendance, which I thought was really good, for people to come out and support that. While we were there, we had Missouri Main Street come out and give a presentation and help show that, show like the people and the property owners, like what we're doing and what to expect, kind of what a Main Street is. And we established 20 goals at this meeting, and they are based on the four points of Main Street. So we have organization, promotion, design, and economic vitality. And I can tell you right now, we've already hit the ground running on some projects that are very exciting, that I will talk about on a later date. So that is the town hall. That being said, they are coming back out on June 16th and 17th, it is the Monday and Tuesday after return to the roost. So just mark your calendars for that, it'll be a two-day workshop, and the USDA and Missouri Main Street are coming down. They're going to be bringing in an architect, a marketing and like brand guru, and then somebody that specializes in economic development. And for the two days, we'll be walking around the square, giving free resources and training to all the property owners, it's open to the public, and there'll be two to three properties that are going to get free renderings from architectural renderings, and design services, branding services, everything for free. So we have to pick two or three, and that's up for debate on who's going to get it. It really depends on the maximum impact, and also, who's going to actually do something. So we don't want to waste these resources, especially because these are thousands of dollars to get, we want to pick somebody that is actually going to be able to use it. So, that'll be something that is in work with us, probably in the next couple of months, as a board, we'll discuss that. The third thing I want to talk to you about and really bring to your attention, I gave you guys a handout for this. So, just recently, Senate Bill 35 and House Bill 610 at the state level was just, the Senate Bill 35 was just passed at the senate level. It has gone to the House, and as of this morning, the, it's like a rules committee has passed it, so now it'll be going to the floor soon. And that's really good news, and what this is, is it is the Revitalizing Downtowns and Main Street Act, and Marshall qualifies for the rural development, which is a 30% tax credit. So this is for housing on the second floor of all the buildings. Just be aware that this is coming down, the fact that it's already been passed by the Senate, it already passed the rules committee at the House, and now it just has to go to the floor to be passed, and this is a state level thing. I believe that we have a really good opportunity and a really good chance to develop our upstairs property, you know, the upstairs, to have residential places. And here's a couple of facts, so 93% of downtowns and Main Streaks have a housing shortage in Marshall, I'm sure we're probably the same in our neighborhoods, I know we're struggling. An increase in housing equals an increase in annual spending in the community that ranges between 26,000 and 46,000 per household from new households. So that is a really good benefit for us, not only will we have life back on the square, but we will also have a revenue increase with that. The fourth thing is, this is very exciting to me, I always say that paint and flowers do wonders, right? So we have a project that we're doing, and it is for hanging flower baskets on the square. Some of you might be familiar with this, I've been working with the city probably, gosh, what, a year and a half for this project? And we are asking people to please consider sponsoring a pole, and it'll be all the light poles around the square, there's 45 of them, I had to go around and count. Somebody asked me what I was doing, and I said I was on a Friday night and I was counting light poles. So that's what I did. So we have 45, we already have 24 sponsored, and we just launched this like four days ago. So it's huge support from the community, I haven't even really approached anybody about this, so just the fact that it's just kind of gotten out there and so many people are supporting this, I think it could be a really good thing for our community, just to help spruce up the downtown, especially with return to the roost coming, we're going to have thousands of people coming back into Marshall, people that have grown up here, visitors, whatever, and if they come back and they see that we are improving, that we do have nice things and we're trying, we might have people move back and invest in the community, which is what we want. So, with that, there is a watering situation. The biggest question is like, okay, great, we can have flowers, but who's going to water them, they're just going to die. And I have been meeting with Randy, there you are, Randy, with the street department to see if possibly the city could help water, and to my understanding, there is some employees that work overtime, and they have to come in and get paid overtime to water the pots that are already there, and it takes about an hour. So let's say we add these flower baskets too, and we can have them potentially do it as well, we might be looking at two hours a day of watering. So, we could split it up, where spring water greenhouse has a truck and a water tank that we can rent, and we can use that, so we can have people doing the spring water truck, and then have maybe the street department doing the other truck potentially. And we have volunteers from the probation and parole officer that I spoke to, and he said that he's got some reliable people in the community service environment that can come out and water flowers. So, it's a project that I'm really excited about, it's almost off the ground, almost running, ready to go, just the biggest thing is figuring out water, so I'd like you guys to please consider potentially increasing the street department budget, I know you're talking about roads, but maybe increase it by, I don't know, a couple grand or something, to be able to compensate for the overtime for some of the employees, or whatever. But, I would like you guys to please just brainstorm some ideas on how we can water these. We do have some volunteers that are interested, but as a city council, I'm asking you to please just think of some ways, maybe you know some organizations that could help out with that. That's what I have. Any questions, anybody?
How much is a sponsor for a pole?
Oh yes, okay, so to sponsor a pole, it's a light pole, it is $250, and that gets the steel brackets, it's two steel brackets, you'll have two baskets with the coconut liner, flowers, soil, and fertilizer, and a plaque with your name on it. So $250 gets all of that, and will help us a lot.
Is that forever, or is that just?
No, so that is the initial year, you know, because we have to invest in the stuff. So once we have the brackets, once we have the baskets, the price will be a lot lower the coming years from now, it's just the initial investment with that. And, you know, there's other cities that have like watering systems, they have crews that go around and water or whatever, and it's not impossible. It's new for us, but it's not new to America, or even the world, I mean, people have hanging baskets all over cities, all over the world, we're not reinventing the will, we just have to figure out how we can apply it to us and make it work. I think flowers would be beautiful on the square. If anybody disagrees, then I don't know what to tell you. Because flowers are great. Do you have any other questions with that?
So you sponsor the pole, you got to plant your own flower?
No, so spring water is going to plant all the baskets for us, and so.
So you're just paying $250, and then you're done?
Yes, and you can pay, so it could be a business, it could be for yourself or your child, you can do a memorial, I have somebody that just requested to buy a pole in memory of somebody, I'm doing one in honor of like my daughter, so if you want to buy something for somebody else, it doesn't have to be for a business, it can be from anybody, or for anybody.
Is there something you put out there to say who's sponsoring that pole?
Yes, there'll be a plaque that we're going to get from Green Printers.
Okay.
And it's UV protectant and everything, so you don't have to worry about it fading, and, yeah, so I think people's name on baskets kind of helps push the envelope a little bit more, a little
Sure.
More agreeable, they can have their name on it.
I'll take one.
Perfect. Thank you, I'll write you down. So now we have 25.
I'll go on this.
Okay. You'll take one too? Okay, so then we have 26.
Jimmy John's.
So 26 out of 45, we are over halfway there, and the flowers need to be ordered soon, so that we can get them planted, and so by Memorial Day weekend when we hang them, they'll be full and beautiful and everything. So, between now and then, I really would like to meet with all of you, probably you too, Mr. Kerman, and figure out like how we can make this work, and look for some volunteers, and it's not impossible. I don't want this project to die just because we can't figure out how we're going to water them. We can water them, we have over 12,000 people in this community, somebody can help. So please, consider it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams, for the update. Next, we got Public Relations and Public Safety Committee, Councilmembers Guthrie and Swisher.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Marshall Fire Department report for this month, total number of five fires were attended, one building, two cooking, one grass, and one dumpster. Also, they were involved with 10 emergency medical service incidents and rescues for hazardous conditions. Go back on those, the categories of those were medical assisting, EMS crew, emergency medical services, and motor vehicle accidents with injuries, there were two of those, but altogether in that category, there were 10. Hazardous conditions with no fire, chemical spills or leak, one, carbon monoxide, one, and attempted burning and illegal action, four. We have been dry, even if it did rain a little bit today, and outdoor burning is not encouraged in any way, shape, or form, at least not right now. Service calls, there was one, general service, one lockout, three public services, and two, again, unauthorized burnings. Good intent calls, there were two, authorized control burning, there was one, and smoke detector activation was one, and alarm system activation. They also had a total of 10 assists with the rural fire department this last month. So, I think that's it. You think you have any?
Not really.
That's it, Charlie?
All right, thank you, Guthrie and Swisher. Next, we have City Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reiterate the discussion about the street tax, and just offer a couple of words of support. I can tell you that in my line of work, the cities that have dedicated transportation sales taxes are head and shoulders above the cities that don't. Because what the council's talking about doing here is a dedicated funding stream that is restricted to transportation improvements by law. What we currently have is a one cent general sales tax that was passed, and it was necessary and important that the voters passed that. However, there's only administrative rules to segregate that money. A dedicated transportation sales tax, like the council has been discussing tonight, is by law, is restricted to those activities as they pertain to rebuilding and resurfacing and repairing streets. This is the sort of thing you notice about a community the moment you drive into it. And one of the things that is probably most compelling about this is that it's not only a dedicated line of funding strictly for streets, but it really puts all of the power for gauging the success of that program into the hands of the voters. When the councilman mentioned a sunset, what that sunset does is unlike a long-term tax, say 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, or a tax with no sunset, you can get creative with those types of long-term taxes, you can issue debt, for example, and maybe pave a bunch of streets and then pay them off, and by the time you've paid them off, they all need to be repaired again. What these transportation sales tax with a sunset does is it puts the power back into voters' hands, because the time horizon is always just a couple of years over the hump. So if the city stops making an aggressive attempt to fix streets, the voters are going to see that right away, and they're going to have an upcoming election at which to correct that issue at the ballot and not renew the tax. So where you see these things, where they're successful in communities around Missouri, you see that they've been renewed over and over and over again by the voters. And the reason is because the city is showing progress every single year, and the voters agree with that progress, and they're renewing the tax. It's a very, very powerful tool to have, and it's one that without, we will always be in the business of making trade-offs. We will be in the business every year of saying, shall we invest this year in public safety via our police and fire department, or shall we invest this year in ASCL? And having a dedicated transportation sales tax says, we've got our And having a dedicated transportation sales tax says, we've got our money for public safety, and we have our money for transportation. And it sets the terms forth by law, and it gives the voters an opportunity to gauge the city's success at the ballot box every five years, or six years, however you set it up. It's an incredibly powerful and sophisticated tool, and it's the kind of thing that will take Marshall kinda to the next level in terms of being a regional leader here in central Missouri. So just my two cents, I wanted to get in on the tax discussion as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions about this issue or any others. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerman. I have no report. Moving on, we'll go to business from the audience. It's limited to three minutes per speaker. Any person, resident or non-resident, wishing to address the council may approach the microphone and state their name and comments. If there's anybody that would like to speak, the podium's free. Wait. Okay. Ms. Adams?
Okay, switching gears here. My name's Rebecca Adams, and right now, I am the Tourism Coordinator for Marshall. So I wear a lot of different hats. I wanted to bring this up to you guys. I don't know if you are aware of the history of Penny Town. It is a, like, a historic black community that is about eight miles south of Marshall, and I have been working with them to help restore their cemetery. So their church is registered on the National Register of Historic Places. I think it is one of three places in the Marshall area, and so it's pretty significant. They have a cemetery that about 20 years ago, they were able to build a fence and a gate and make it really nice, and then within two weeks, they were a victim of a hate crime, and some people came in and bulldozed everything down, and they've never been able to replace it since. So I've been working really hard to help them fix their cemetery, you know, fix their headstones, whatever. I've been in contact with a man named Kurt Jordan. He's with the State Preservation Office, and he will be here next Saturday at Fairview Cemetery in Marshall, which is on Best Street, over by the Y. And he's gonna be here giving a workshop for anybody, the public is welcome to attend, please attend. I will be cleaning up the cemetery, pulling out brush, and also learning how to clean headstones and preserve them, and prop them back up and have them where they should be, put them in place, and just help honor the people in the past that have passed away and that are buried there. We have veterans at both Fairview Cemetery, we have them also at Finnis Creek Cemetery with Penny Town. And so, you know, we've got the American Legion out of Malta Bend that's involved in this process as well. So I just wanted to make you guys aware of this project that is going on. I have been in contact with Representative Mark Nolte on this, and he's very interested in helping with this project. And I know, Mr. Kerman, you've been interested in helping the Fairview Cemetery with some stuff. And this is just a project that is very important. We have over 33 African-American cemeteries in Celine County. All 33 of them are dilapidated, all 33. Several of them are hidden within trees and just totally grown over. And as we fix the Penny Town Cemetery, as we get that registered as well with the church, and as we fix the Fairview Cemetery in City Limits, we're gonna be expanding to a county-wide project, but for now, we have to focus on the two and kinda get started and go from there. But if you are interested, there's an event link on Facebook for the cemetery cleanup, or you can contact me, Rebecca Adams, at tourism@visitmarshallmo.com, or find me on Facebook, or around the square, I'm around. So if you guys have any questions, please let me know.
Did you say bulldoze the cemetery?
Yeah, the fence, the gate, everything. And they had saved money, they invested, they paid for it out of their pocket, you know, and then somebody came in with, I guess, truck or whatever, ransacked the whole thing, tore it all down, headstones were destroyed, some were stolen. It's ridiculous. So as a community, we have to honor the past, we need to honor the history of the past, and especially African-American cemeteries and African-American history in our county. It's very important.
Just a question.
Yeah, it's terrible, I know.
And I'm almost ashamed to ask this, but is Virginia Houston still alive?
She is.
Well, good.
Yes, she is. And Penny Town is working on a documentary right now. So they received a grant from the Missouri Humanities Grant, so that's pretty awesome that they're working on that. But yes, Virginia is still alive, and she's one of the last descendants that was born...
She was the last baby that was born there.
She was born in Penny Town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, yeah, she's been around a long time, as long as I remember.
Yeah, yeah. So any questions? Nothing? Okay, you can find me, you know where to find me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wanted to ask about the housing project on West Best, supposed to build 104 houses, I believe. I observed the farmers were in there the other day getting ready to plow. Is that project still going, or as far?
I can speak to that if you'd like, yeah, thank you. The developer just today submitted a revised preliminary plat, which I believe, I haven't had a chance to really pour through it, it came in about 2:00 today, but I believe the intention is still to have a development of that size, but rather than attempt to plat and develop it all at once, they're going to take it sort of in chapters, so 30 houses at a time. And then that would allow the street connections to build out with each phase. The original approach for 104 or so houses at once was gonna require all of the street systems to kinda go in at the same time. They already have to put all the infrastructure at the same time. So this phased approach should lead to a more orderly development pattern. That being said, though, I haven't had a chance to go through those plans. They will be submitted, though, to the subdivision advisory board for consideration of a preliminary plat. All those meetings will be public, and of course, the public is welcome to come in. And as we move through preliminary plat to final plat, and then ultimately to council approval, you all will hear about those plans as they come in. I imagine that what will likely happen, since we're talking about a retooling, that the final plat that you previously saw with the 104, that you're gonna see a revision of that within Phase, like, Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3. And I think that if everything is on track here, that that's something that you could look forward to in the next, like, 60 to 90 days. So at this point, though, I would expect that whoever's farming that land should be able to go forward with their crops, because there has not been any, no transfer of that ground has taken place at this point, still owned by the city.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Certainly. Discussion, inappropriate follow-up, 2025 street program. Dan, do you wanna say anything about that?
Yeah, we, like I said, we brought this to y'all last time, and we're coming back with basically the same program, and we would like to get the council approval tonight on that, so Randy can take off and start working on bids. We wanna get these out and get them done. Hopefully, we'd like to get this program done before school starts. That's always our target thing. So we'll have contract language that will try to get that done. It worked last year very well. They got them done early, so, but I would, I would put that in the form of a motion that we approve the proposed 2025 street program that you have before you.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I move to approve the street program.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two, we have bids of Marshall Airport surveillance cameras. Has everybody had a chance to look at that? And I have here, it just says the Municipal Service Department would like to submit the following bids for surveillance cameras at the Marshall Municipal Airport. I'm asking the mayor and city council for consideration of accepting the bid for $13,615 submitted by Hudson Home Protection from Lee Summit. And as you can see, it looks like we only got two bids. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. And the other one was $30,000 or something like that. Which always brings me to a question, was there a big difference other than price? I mean, did one of them bid more in than the other one, or?
Randy?
Actually, the lower one has more cameras. They added extra cameras for the drag racers.
Yeah. When you look at it, it doesn't, it's hard to tell why the other one was so high, you know? I don't wanna speculate, but I know the one from, like you said, Hudson Home Equipment has a good reputation. There's gonna be cameras out at the fuel tanks, on each corner of the building, watching the hangers, watching the tarmac. It's pretty well-covered. And then it's got, the system itself can be cloud-based, so whoever has access to those cameras can log in anytime on your phone and watch all the cameras. If there's an incident, the server, there's an onsite server, and it stores, you know, 25 to 30 days. Well, with 10 cameras, it's probably gonna store more like 60 days. So if there's ever a complaint, you just go into that software, save it to your hard drive, and then you have it forever for whatever you need, so, yeah.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to...
Well, obviously, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion to approve this camera system for the, and get it going before the spray season here, so...
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the third one, we have the bids for Marshall Airport hay harvesting for 2025, 2026. And this one says Municipal Service Department would like to submit the following two-year hay bids for the cut, the bail, and removal of Marshall Airport hay for 2025, 2026. And it says, I request the mayor and city council's approval of the bid of $10,810 submitted by Joshua Crank from Marshall. And it looks like we only, how many bids did we get here?
Two.
Two of them?
I do have a question for somebody. Just, I mean, is there anything to, like, how often they have to do that? I mean, what I'm getting at is sometimes, I mean, that gets so long there, it stays long for so long.
We put language in there this year. The old contract did not, and so we ran into trouble with that. So I don't remember what we said this year, by June 1st or something like that?
15, 15.
By June 15th, yeah. So there is language in there that it has to have their first cut.
Or two and a half feet.
Yeah, so there's a height or a June 15th restriction. I'll just leave it out there over here.
But then, I mean, beyond June 15th, do they have to do it a certain number more times, or?
Just depends on if we get enough rain and growth, you know?
But anytime it gets to two and a half feet?
Anytime it gets to that height, or, I mean, no matter what, by June 15th, your first cut, two and a half feet or not, you're cutting it. If it gets to two and a half feet before that, then they need to cut it, yeah. So we did put some language in to protect that, because we saw the last couple of years it got out of control, so... Great question.
Any more questions? I need a motion and a second to approve this. Do we have a motion and a second?
I move to approve it.
Second, Allen.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There we go. Moving on to the resolutions. Ms. Lewis, would you read the resolution by title only, please?
Excuse me, a resolution authorizing Marshall Municipal Utilities to enter into a real estate purchase and sale agreement with Crescent Realty Corporation for the acquisition of property located at 388 North Miami Avenue, Marshall, Missouri.
I need a motion and a second to approve. Could I have a motion and a second to approve this? Has everybody had a chance to look at this?
Yeah. Jeff, do you wanna say anything about this?
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer questions. Yeah, go ahead.
Does this include the business of Crescent Electric, or behind?
Not the business, but the property. It's the building, all the racking that was in there, and then the lot that borders our substation between the building and the substation there. And this is in relation to the Marshall Energy Center project. We need some room there to get some turbine leads in, and it'll add a lay-down area for some of the projects we've got going on over there. Just happened to work out, we called and we're checking on getting an easement, and they said, well, we don't really, not interested in that, because we're closing the business, we're gonna sell it. So that's kinda where, how we ended up where we're at, but the board stewards it. I think, you know, it'll be a good building for this project, we'll kinda reevaluate it again later, if there's a continued need to have the building, but I think it's key to having this project completed.
Okay, thank you. I move to approve the motion.
Second.
Charlie, second.
Ms. Lewis, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Brandt?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Guthrie?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Swisher?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, moving on to number two. Could you read that resolution by title only, please?
A resolution authorizing Marshall Municipal Utilities to execute a master services agreement with Toth and Associates Incorporated.
Jeff?
I'm back. So what this does is this gives us an engineer of record, so if we have projects come up, we've got an engineer already, we don't have to do RFQs for every project, so there's no cause to have them, it's just if something comes up, we've got an engineer for any project that we need on the electric side. And I think we've got one of these, we're out for RFQs now on the water and wastewater side.
I move to approve the authorization of Marshall Municipal Utilities using the Toth and Associates.
Do I have a second?
Second, Allen.
Ms. Lewis, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Cook?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Guthrie?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Swisher?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Ordinances, we have appropriations. Ms. Lewis, could you read the first reading by title only, please?
An ordinance making the appropriation for the payment of accounts out of the different city funds.
I need a motion and a second. Detective, a second reading?
So moved. Meg.
Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Green?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Guthrie?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Swisher?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Hi, fellas, is there any other council business we need to discuss?
I have one thing, get you time after your program. This is for you, J.D. and Elizabeth. Reading the article in the Democrat News concerning the lawsuit that the county commission is involved in right now, the, if that would be successful, and if Celine County would quit being, or quit being able to operate as a second-class county and have to go to a third-class county, what impact's that gonna have on the city as far as collecting taxes? What kind of elections, like sales tax elections, things along that line, are we gonna be restricted on, or maybe cannot even have? Want me to take a stab at this, or would you?
That's a big question. And I think we need to see how it plays out, and I have read a summary of the opinion, I have not read the entire opinion, and I would want to do quite a bit of research before answering that question in detail. It's my understanding that part of the case was remanded, and that there may be some other things that come to fruition down the road. I think there are... Want me to take a stab at this, or would you?
That's a big question. And I think we need to see how it plays out. And I have read a summary of the opinion. I have not read the entire opinion, and I would want to do quite a bit of research before answering that question in detail. It's my understanding that part of the case was remanded and that there may be some other things that come to fruition down the road. I think there are some things in the current opinion that definitely could impact the county that would not necessarily impact the city. But again, I'd be happy to dig into that, but I think that, I'm not comfortable now addressing those issues. It's a pretty complicated opinion.
As I read the article, that's what I thought, is what I thought I'd ask.
And I have read the article in the paper, but just looking at the opinion, yes, it's uh, but go ahead, take your seat.
The only thing that I would add would be that the, most of the powers that are given to cities through the state statutes and the designations that correspond to those powers, third-class city, fourth-class city, are set forth separately from the classification of the county. But that does not mean that there may not be some impact from this. So while I don't think that, I would not expect there to be any change to our underlying classification as a third-class city, there may be some impact on questions like the collection of taxes. I think that's something that we would need to research and come back and talk to you How's that for a non-answer?
Do you want to?
Thank you, yeah. I think that we'll, I'm sure this is on everybody's minds. I think we can look at this a little bit, and as this moves forward, we won't be the only impacted city. So I mean, I think to the extent that this is going to require some discussion and some thought, we can plan to bring that to you and bring you the sort of detail that you're going to need if you need to deliberate over any of these issues, so.
And there are also issues that potentially the legislature could address as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Swisher?
I move to enter into executive session concerning legal action, cause of action or litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys, hiring, firing, discipline, or promotion of particular employees by a governmental body.
Nathan made the motion. I need a second. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Lewis, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Guthrie?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Swisher?